Good evening. Could we do salute to the salute to the flag, please? Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Mr. Arty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. And we have, I assume, Lowell High Student Rep. Okay. Nice to have you in its joy destiny. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. When I was on the committee years ago, we didn't have that position. So it's nice to have someone here from the high school. So thanks for coming. Next, we have Special Order of Business Spotlight on Excellence Pine Arts Magnet School Musical. Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me again congratulate you. I think this is the first time in formal setting that I'm recognizing you as Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is a great honor anytime we can welcome our young people. I had the opportunity to be at opening night of Into the Woods, which is what we're recognizing here as a response to Committee Member Dakota's recognition of a couple of months back. So I'm glad that we're able to start the new year here with our children. I'm going to hand the microphone over to our Chief Academic Officer for a more formal welcome. And let me also welcome Principal Robert, who's here with her students. CEO Desmond.
Thank you Superintendent Boyd. In November, sixty Pine Arts students representing Grade Seven and Eight performed two sold-out shows of Into the Woods in their newly updated cafeterium. So we had lighting and sound systems upgraded for this for the year, but also in a timely way so that it could happen before the performance. I would like to just point out that this is a big production that represents a collaborative effort between staff, families, students. And this particular performance was directed by Stephen Rose. Musical director was Will Jones. They are both here tonight to assist the students in the performance. Choreography was handled by Audrey Crawford Rivera. Lighting was handled by Aaron Hebert, who is also here taking photos. Set production was handled by Jackie Miller and Kevin Joy in collaboration with the students. And sound technician was Nick Romanowski. So I just wanted to acknowledge everyone's contribution. And I believe, Mr. Rose, will you be having the students come up and do a performance for us? Wonderful.
Let's go.
Everyone, I'd like to welcome some of our graduating eighth graders to give you a little taste of our performance of Into the Woods. So I'm going to let them do what they know how to do, whenever you guys are ready.
And it came to pass. All that seemed wrong was now right. The kingdoms were filled with joy, and those who deserved to were certain to live a long and happy life.
You've changed. You're daring. You're different in the woods. More sure, more sharing. You're getting us through the woods. If you could see, you're not the man who started. Had much more open heart than I knew.
It takes two. I thought one was enough. It's not true. It takes two of us. You came through. When the journey was rough, it took you. It took two of us. It takes care. It takes patience and fear and despair to change. Though you swear to change, you can't tell if you do.
We've changed. We're strangers. I'm meeting you in the woods. Who minds? What dangers? I know we can pass the woods. And once we're past, let's hope the changes last. Beyond woods, beyond witches and slippers and hoods, just the two of us beyond lies. Safe at home, it's our beautiful prize. Just a few of us. It takes trust. It takes just a bit more, and we're done. We want four, we have none. We've got three. We need one. It takes two.
Thank you so much for welcoming us here tonight. And Mr. Dakota, we really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you guys for having us. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. That was great. It would have been nice if everybody payed up and danced. Maybe next time we get a little participation here. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm always proud of the fact that so many of our youngsters at the middle school level get a chance to be exposed to musicals and be exposed to music as they are. And I'm so proud of that as an accomplishment in this city because we have such talented kids. I wish the public knew about it. I wish it was better advertised in the newspaper. But again, I'm so proud of all of our kids, and it gives me great pleasure personally, having been in the performing arts myself. So it really does hearken back to that to my career. And so I'm very proud of my children and these kids everywhere in the city. So again, kudos. I'm so proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All set?
If I could, before our staff and students leave, we have a number of staff here that came to support our young people. And I think it really takes a partnership between home and school. If I could, just recognize one of our fathers who's here, Ty Sang, who's also a guidance counselor at Stocklosa. And he's one of our local celebrities, having written an award-winning book, Years of Zero. That's the author right there. So thank you, parents. Thank you, staff and students. Thank you. We really, really admire you for what you do, and you inspire us every single day. Thank you.
Next, we have the minutes. So we need a motion to accept and place on file the special meeting minutes of December 18th, 2019, regular scheduled meeting minutes of December 18th, 2019, and the minutes of the inauguration exercises on January 6th, 2020. So any discussion? Motion by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, say aye. Now we're down to permission to enter. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. This month's submission is within your packet. Recommendation is approval as written.
Any discussion? Motion to accept, motion to approve and accept by Ms. Arty, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Next, we have memorials. Like to have a moment of silence and dock in chambers for Donna St. Laurent, Greenfield School Secretary, and Ella Vaughan, Stocklosa School Student. If we could dock in the chambers. Next, we have motions. Request Superintendent provide the committee with the following follow-up information to the report generated from her April 2018 motion regarding status of outdoor play spaces. The updated report should include information on newly added playgrounds as well as outline plans, timeline, to ensure every elementary and middle school has access to a safe, age-appropriate outdoor play areas, including collaborating with the city to target for extra oversight those city-managed parks that are the only outdoor play space for certain schools. That's a long sentence. Ms. Arty? Second, we need a second by Mr. Hoey, Ms. Arty.
Thank you. I apologize for the length of the motion. I think it's pretty clear what I'm looking to do. We had an excellent report in 2018 that really identified how many of our schools do not have outdoor play structures and how many do. In the spirit of equity for all our students, I'm looking to make sure that we get adequate and appropriate play spaces at every one of our schools. So this follow-up report, as I mentioned, is looking for an update because since that time, I believe we've added two outdoor play spaces, one at the Moody School, one behind the Robinson School. So there are still many schools that are lacking. Two that come right to mind are the STEM Academy, the Rogers School. It's going to be up to almost 900 students. That is a K-8 school where they don't have any play structure outside. And the Cardinal O'Connell School, our newest for the littlest learners preschool doesn't have outside space, which is why the second part of my motion talks about collaborating with the city. Because some of those places, there are city parks nearby, but the city has not had the resources to really adequately stay on top of those parks. There's been problems with loitering, drug use, needles, whatever, that make it unsafe for our children. So my goal is with this follow-up report, we'll also get a plan of attack of targeting what are the priority playgrounds that our schools depend on, where they have no other outside access, and kind of making those areas that the city will focus on for additional oversight and resources. So that's really the intention, and I look forward to getting that updated information. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say that I like this motion, and I also think we have I took a quick ride this morning to the Shaughnessy School, the Cardinal O'Connell, and the Butler. And I know it's still winter, but it was a nice day to be out. We do have a lot of leaves that are still up against the fences. The Cardinal O'Connell School, they don't have a playground. It looked really clean. That school looked immaculate, actually, and they had the kids outside playing in a fenced-in yard, looked very safe. But it's they don't have a playground there at all. They don't even have the room for it. But it is a preschool, and they had them out today. I couldn't believe it, just watching them in the yard. I was pretty excited to see how happy they all were. But this motion shares the thing about safety, and to me, the leaves are a big deal. It's our job around our schools, not the parks. If you looked at the back of the Shaughnessy and the Butler today, I thought our schools looked really good, and I thought the parks looked really bad, Mayor. Just a lot of leaves, and I know it's winter time. I still have leaves in my yard, but the leaves are a big deal to me. It makes it look real good when they're cleaned and they're not near the bottom of the fence. So I thought our schools looked good today, by the way, but I think it's something I think your motion is right on. These kids need a safe place, and I know you're going to do a good job with that on the city side also. So thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Second motion by Mr. Hoey. Request Superintendent provide the committee with the report on the district's compliance with Chapter 71, Section 69. Are flags provided and properly displayed in compliance with the law? And is each teacher in the district leading the class in a group recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag? Mr. Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Mr. Hoey?
Thank you. I'm pretty sure every school's complying, but I want to know if they are. I just believe it's important. Sometimes it might be the smallest thing, but if you read the law, at the end of that law, it says something about if people aren't doing it, there'll be a $5 fine. So to me, that was that might have been written in the early 1900s. I remember 25 years ago on the school committee, and I think it was Representative Tom Golden kept hearing me talk about when a child can quit school. This is 25 years ago. And the law read, and if I remember it correctly, it said a child can drop out of school at the age of 14 with the permission of mother, father, superintendent of schools, or they have a job in a farm or in a mill. So a lot of those laws have been written 100 years ago, just like some of our policies. So I didn't bring this up for any big deal. I'm glad the staff helped me. Thank you very much for putting this motion together. And I just want to make sure the school committee and the school system has given them the tools to have all the flags and everything in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Now, eight, we're to report to Superintendent. 8.1, grant award notification, FC 528, increased access to quality after-school and summer programs. Any discussion on 8-1?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, there's these are three grant awards, which is just continuing in the theme of Vice Chair Dakota's recognition of our young people, recognizing the good news to the district. We know that the budget outlook this year, right now, the tone is such that we believe we're going to be in a favorable budget season this year. We'll know more towards the end of this month. But what we're also seeing, at the same time that this is a favorable budget horizon, we're also seeing more external dollars find their way into the district as a result of the collaboration of our staff and the collaboration with external partners. The first two, Chief Academic Officer Desmond will speak to, and the third, Chief Equity Officer Phillips will speak to. Ms. Desmond?
Thank you Superintendent Boyd. The FC 528 was a competitive grant, and it allowed organizations to seek out funding for after-school programming and summer school program. And this is different than our 21st Century programming. So 21st Century, there's a criteria to be able to receive the funding at a site, and oftentimes it has to do with the school's accountability results. This particular grant did not have those contingencies. However, it was highly competitive. We were able to work with the principals at the Pine Arts and the Riley School, which typically are not eligible for 21st Century grant funding, to be able to provide them very similar after-school and summer school programming. This year, the award is for $190,000. Next year, it will increase because this is a half-year award, and next year, we will be able to provide this programming from the beginning of the school year. And this is a three-year grant. And so I'd like to thank Carolyn Rochelow, who worked very hard, working with myself and the principals of these schools, to be able to write a very competitive grant. She was actually the highest dollar amount recipient of all the people who received all the organizations who received grant funding under this particular FC 528. The second grant here is the this is a very specific grant for ELL programming, and this grant will allow us to provide summer school experience for students who qualify under ELL status. So primarily, this grant will provide a summer school experience for students that would be considered newcomers. And so this particular grant, we received something very similar to it a few years ago. It was not available last year. It became available again this year. And so this grant is for $83,000, and this will allow for ELL summer enrichment for students who fall into that category. And this particular grant, we're going to look to have experiential learning components within the summer school for our students.
Mr. Mayor, school committee members. Lowell Public Schools has also been awarded a Portrait of a Graduate Grant. That was a competitive grant as well. We were awarded $250,000, which was the top amount that the foundation was awarding. The intention of this grant is to develop a definition of student success by going deeply into a community-led process with students and families and other stakeholders.
All set? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions on this one. First off, congratulations. That's an enormous win for the Lowell Public Schools, so that's wonderful. I just had a couple of things. One was, so $250,000, based on your report, this is to be spent in six months?
It's to be spent in 12 months, January 1st through December.
Okay. The reported said June, because I was going to say that's going to be a heck of a six months. I mean, I'm down for it, but that's a lot, even for a year. I mean, that's amazing. So the looking through some of the moves that you're going to be making with the report, so the stipend with CBA, I'm assuming that's a salary, it's not a stipend?
It's a stipend of for one of their employees.
But so it would be like a subcontract. It's not an additional piece of it's not an additional job that one of their staff is taking on. It will become part of that individual's actual job?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then the participatory research model, is that a method of research? Because I wasn't familiar with it, so I'd love to hear what that kind of entails.
Sure. So that's part of our student engagement and ensuring that we're not just conducting listening sessions, but actually utilizing some research methods and processes for collecting that that student feedback.
Okay. So is part of the overall grant, then, I know we're moving towards trying to create this vision, you know, this portrait of a graduate. Is there are there funds allocated within it for actual activities? I mean, I know we'll be doing the, you know, surveys and focus groups and all that traditional, well, I'm sure it'll be much more innovative, but, you know, the stuff you usually do when you're doing this kind of stuff. But are there going to be any like actual activities happening with with teachers, with students, kind of over and above, just trying to define what we're trying to get to, actual activities that will help us get there?
Yes, so there will be some of the funding is for incentives for student leaders, for parent leaders, for participants, to, you know, again, to have broad, broad engagement.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Arty?
Thank you, and I just had a quick question regarding the ELL grant, if I could ask. Ms. Desmond, you mentioned it was a summer enrichment program for our newcomers, and there was going to be an experiential component. Is that going to be at one site? And what are the ages that it will encompass?
Thank you. So this this will be at the high school. And we will service students that are have just completed eighth grade through high school, going into 12th grade. And again, we because of the fact that the students are second language learners, we want to be able to incorporate a lot of experiential and visitations and all of those things. So we'll be working with community partners to develop an enrichment program.
Any further discussion on this?
Yes, Mayor, just a quick comment. So through you, Mayor Tila Tifa, you worked with CBA on this, Young Ju Chow, maybe she was part of that? Well, I just want to say, in my opinion, anything that woman has touched in the past five or six years has turned to gold, so I'm fully behind this. I'm going to support everything you do with grants. Nice job.
Thank you. Next, we have 8-2, grant award notification, FC 181, Grantway Cities Grants for High-Quality Intensive English Language Learner Programs. All right. So where do we jump to? All right, you went one, two, and three. Okay. Now we have strategic planning update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we welcome two new committee members, and Committee Member Dillon and Committee Member Clark, and we thought and I thought through the reports that might be most useful as we head into this year, you have two in front of you today that we thought to be the best use of time for our time together this evening. First is an update on where we stand with our strategic plan. Ms. Phillips is going to take us through where we are as a reminder for the committee and the millions and millions watching worldwide. We're in the last phase of the strategic planning process that actually began prior to my arrival, as the school committee undertook a comprehensive analysis of the community and undergoing a superintendent search into then my entry process here into the superintendency, now moving into our first budget cycle together. We will be bringing to you a strategic plan for adoption ahead of budget adoption. You'll be receiving that in You'll be receiving that in the late spring. Ms. Phillips will share with you the current update, and we will continue to provide you updates into the adoption, which we anticipate at the end of April. Ms. Phillips?
Sure, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. So just a reminder for everyone and for our new members, we are engaging in this process to help to define the next five years of our, of our school district to maximize our potential as a mission-driven, student-focused organization. And our goal is, at the end of this process, we will have a document, that's a living document, a document that doesn't sit on the shelf, but that actually is something that we continue to come back to on a quarterly basis or whatever basis the school committee so desires to ensure that we're meeting the goals that have been set for each year over the next five years. As discussed at an earlier meeting in the fall, Superintendent Boyd, upon his entry, did engage in an extensive listening tour across the district, has met with dozens of small group sessions and community forums across our stakeholders. And based on the information from his initial listening, did present on October second, an update with the foundation on which our strategic plan would be built. There are four thematic goal areas in which our work is anchored, and they're bulleted here, improving academic achievement, improving operational efficiency, ensuring safe and welcoming school environment, and increasing community engagement and empowerment of families. So then, since October, in the November meeting, we presented on the four strategic priorities that have been identified as the basis for our continuous improvement. And those are expanding early learning opportunities, so really preparing our students to be successful as they enter into our K-12 system, increasing access to high-performing seats across schools in our districts, aligning high school curriculum and programming with post-secondary opportunities, and then leveraging our rich diversity through our commitment to equity. And so as we've begun to develop our goals and initiatives, and Dr. Boyd had shared with you a chart with small print, about eight font, which I'm happy to reshare with our new members. We've, we've put together a strategic planning committee, and over fifty individuals applied, expressed interest. About fifty additional individuals were recommended. And in the end, we have identified approximately twenty-five individuals to serve on this steering committee. Priority was placed on inclusivity and ensuring that underrepresented voices, untapped networks that previously maybe haven't had a seat at the table are now going to be involved in the advising, the vetting of the plans. We'll share with them the themes that we've heard from the listening sessions and see, is it resonating? Are we on the right course? We plan to share out those dates with our committee very shortly. We were able to solidify it today. So we'll share that out with you as well, the different voices. And I really am excited that it is a blend of community members and staff who will come together, our hope is who will come together, and really have a collective voice in ensuring that we're on the right direction, going in the right direction. And I also wanted to, to raise that our work with the Portrait of a Graduate is also aligned with this strategic planning. I'm really excited at the additional level of community engagement and student engagement that the grant is going to enable us to do. Because at the end of this grant, we want to walk away with a definition of student success. And that includes academic skills, but it also includes competencies, and it, and it includes mindsets and dispositions. And so we're really looking forward to hearing from our students around their hopes, their dreams, what, the ways in which they want our schools to prepare them. We also want to hear from our families, you know, what are the community values, the family values that, that they'd like to see incorporated within their students' classroom education? And recently, we had a planning session with the Grant Foundation, and one of our takeaways was that we need to work more closely with our workforce and our industries as well, because we are preparing our students to step into the future workforce. And there, there's a link I'd love to send to you to watch on your own time, but it really spoke to the changing world that we're in right now. And we often don't think about our second graders or our youngest students. They are going to hit the workforce in 2030 and be working until 2080. And we're preparing them right now for that world. And is our system nimble enough right now to prepare them for the jobs that have not been imagined right now as well as the jobs that have been imagined right now? So we need to be doing both of those things right now. And the Portrait of a Graduate will allow us to, I believe, have that fullest definition of, of what a well-rounded student looks like when they leave our K-12 system. And so we're looking forward to engaging with our steering committee in community mapping. So one of the things that we have recognized is that our networks are not fully built out across all of our stakeholder groups. And so we really are looking forward, in this diverse steering committee, to understand where are the gaps in engagement that, that we need to strengthen. And then also looking to, to clearly articulate the mission and vision statements. And again, are we on the right course of action with everything that we've heard in the first semester? We're also looking forward to the community and staff forums that are being scheduled. So Dr. Boyd will be meeting with each school building, having the opportunity to listen to our teachers and school-based staff, to hear the direction that the district is, is, you know, planning in these strategic areas. And twenty-eight schools, we're hoping to conclude end of February, hopefully, beginning of March. So we're really carving that time out on Dr. Boyd's schedule. And then convening of working groups. So everyone who expressed an interest in being a part of this, there is room for everyone to be a part of this. Maybe not on the steering committee, but definitely as part of a focus group or a working group. So that will follow our, our steering committee and school-based sessions. And again, our sessions will be geared toward discussing the goal areas and our priority areas, and, and sharing out the, our initial planning in each of these areas. So again, the upcoming school visits, they'll be open to Lowell Public School staff, taking place at all of our buildings. We're also looking forward to using new technology and recognizing that not everyone has time to come in person, but we can start utilizing online, online meetings, online town hall software. I know that's something very new for us, but, but that's something that many industries are using, not to take the place of in-person meetings, but to add that additional flexibility. And this is just a visual of strategic planning sequencing, just to demonstrate that the information is not linear, in a sense. It really is coming to us, but then to our steering committee. And what we're hearing, we then want to have a checks and balance with our, our families and community, going into working groups, back to the steering committee, and to the superintendent, and then to you for final approval. So with that, I'd like to conclude our initial presentation. Update to you?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And this is a evolving and iterative process throughout. The learning from one session leads to some questions and some additional learning to others. Many of you took part in our open community forums. Some of you came to what we've referred to as Breakfast with Boyd. Some of you joined me at Sessions with Students. There is a, and now we're going to engage staff. When we say staff only, this is a time to engage staff directly for, kind of to gain that intense feedback and rich feedback from our staff that have been working with our children each day. But our listening and our learning doesn't stop in these formal sessions. You know, I share often that, you know, from our, from my meeting with parents, then I end up getting connected with students. One interesting story that just kind of shares the learning and how we learn about the needs of our community and how to best serve our students. One breakfast with parents, a parent reached out to me, said, can you spend some time with my son? I checked in with her again, spent some time with her son, and she shared some additional stories. Ms. Phillips and I will be joining the family for dinner next week to, and all of that listening and learning, while that is the, the work of us supporting our families, it also provides us with insight on how to better serve all families that then drives the work and the planning of this strategic plan. With that, I open the floor to questions.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick ones. So looking at the, your graphic here, so are the working groups made up of the same members as the steering committee? Like, is the steering committee being broken into the work groups and then coming back as a steering committee?
So the steering committee will have the opportunity to break into working groups. But we also recognize that people have a lot of advisement to provide us with, and they may not have, you know, twenty, thirty hours to do the work. So they will definitely have the opportunity to be in working groups, but the individuals who indicated they wanted to be a part of it, many are, many of them are our staff. And I truly do believe there's room for, for everyone's voices into, into this process, so. So to answer your question, they will have the opportunity to, to be a part of or lead a working group, but it is not a requirement, because sometimes when you make it a requirement, it, it pulls people from being able to participate.
So you'd envision the working groups including maybe, maybe leadership from steering committee members? But it would actually be include, the groups themselves would be made up of staff and perhaps people who aren't even on the steering committee?
Mm-hmm, and experts in a, in a particular area.
Beautiful. And then my only other question was, the, there was a term that I wasn't familiar with, the high-performing seats. So I can guess what that means, but I'd love like an actual definition.
Yeah. So I think the definition is, is best provided through a description. We have some schools where overall, as a school, there are high-performing schools. However, within each of our schools, we have high-performing classrooms and high-performing programs. So what we are looking to do here as a district, by, as our priority, is not just expanding our schools that have overall been identified as high-performing schools, but recognizing and identifying which programs are high-performing programs, making sure we can expand those, and understanding which classrooms are high-performing classrooms, even though the school overall may have some additional needs, so we can replicate the work that's happening in those classrooms. Because the commitment is that every family, every child will have access to a high-quality education for the duration of their time in Lowell Public Schools. So we use the definition or the, the word seat as opposed to school or as opposed to classrooms, because it could mean many different structures.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I just have one question, Dr. Boyd. And I'm not sure if you know, so years ago, we had Read, the Read One Eighty program at the high school. Is that still in use, or is there a substitute?
Yes, Read One Eighty is, is in use in, in certain schools. Our Chief Academic Officer can, is always great at providing a historical perspective as well. Are you prepared, Ms. Desmond? Or would you like to provide a report at a later time?
I will provide a report at a later time.
Thank you, Ms. Desmond.
But it is being used at the high school.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Just to go back to the working groups for a moment. So is there opportunity for other community members who have shared, expressed interest to participate in those groups? Not just staff or experts? Okay.
So right now, I have a list of everyone who has expressed interest. So that's the list that I'm working with. But if there are others who came forward who said, I'm interested, or as we look at the groups, if we see that there's an imbalance, then we would seek out other, other individuals to provide, you know, that, you know, that balance of voices.
What would be the best way for people to express interest? How would they get their name on a list?
Well, they can send me an email, and I'm happy to, you know, an email and their area of interest or expertise.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? So next, we have Site-Based Budget and Fair Student Funding Update. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. As you may recall, as a, as a committee, we've made the commitment that while we're beginning the process of long-term planning, we're also prioritizing each and every day of school and making sure throughout this year that the strategic plan itself includes certain decisions that we know the committee, the community is ready for us to make now, so that we can set that stage for long-term improvement. This committee, in its wisdom, has adopted the approach of allocating our dollars based on student needs and empowering and engaging our school communities to make individual decisions at each school site so that we can tailor programming to the unique needs of our individual school communities. The school committee has also endorsed the commissioning of a external consulting agency to provide us with expertise as we move through this rather complex process. We've been fortunate enough to engage a Massachusetts-based firm that does this work across the country. So Education Resource Strategies, Laura and David are here. They're going to come up and share. They're going to be behind you presenting. The screen is in front of you. From all those that are watching on telecast, you'll see the screen and hear their voice as usual. But school committee members, you might have to toggle between behind you and in front. They also will be singing their entire presentation tonight, so.
That must be the cue for Laura to come up here, not me. Dr. Boyd, thank you, and can you all hear? Okay, excellent. Unless I break things.
That happens all the time.
Does it? Is this like a trick mic? Okay. My name is David Rosenberg. I'm a partner at Education Resource Strategies. Do you want me to take the clicker or just say next page? Thanks, Billy Joe. Thank you for having us. So I'm here with my colleague Laura Schick, who is leading much of the work that we're doing. Thank you. On the note, I will not sing, but I have to tell you that my kids are, who are in eighth grade and fifth grade are going to be infinitely more impressed that I was on the same, same docket as a Sondheim performance versus the usual school committee meeting. So they feel very lucky about that. We are going to spend a few minutes, want to do a little bit of introductions about ourselves, but largely focus on what is fair student funding and site-based budgeting? What does it mean the work is going to look like over the next few months? And particularly, thinking about the lens of what is the role of the school committee in this process? Because it is a change from how many districts, I don't know about Lowell, but how many districts operate in terms of building really strong systems in place for allocating and using your precious resources to support your students. Quickly about us, it is a privilege to be able to do work in our home state. ERS, we are based in Watertown. We're a nonprofit organization. I think that's important to emphasize. Everything we do, everything we build is there for you to use. Our focus is on working with school systems, and our focus is on resources, which we define as people, time, and money, to ensure that every school can be successful for every student. So key points here is that we do work as our partner. So key points here is that we do work as our partners, our school systems. While everything is about serving students within schools, we focus on how do you build the systems and structures at a district level in order to support schools to be successful? And our lens is resource use. So how do you allocate resources, and then how do you use them in order to support your students? Sometimes people think of that as, well, this is the budget exercise, or it's the bean counting exercise, and I'm sure Billy Joe is familiar with sort of that, that line of thinking. All of your money, most of it is invested in people and the time that they have to support your students. So we should think about this as how schools work, and how do we support them in that? As Dr. Boyd mentioned, we've had the opportunity to work all across the country in the 15 years that we've been doing this work. In this particular map, we've highlighted districts where we have supported specifically fair student funding, design and implementation. So we're, have developed tools and processes and guides over the period of time that we've been doing this work that we can now apply in Lowell to help ensure that you all can be off and running with this process. A quick note about language. So in Lowell, this is fair student funding. In many other districts, it has different names. If you go to our website and start digging around, you'll find a lot about student-based budgeting. It is the same, and in Lowell, it is fair student funding. But if you see other references, or if we slip into other language, I just want to be clear that this is what we're talking about, and this is the Lowell strategy is, is fair student funding. So why would we engage in a process to build fair student funding? This really comes down to the idea of what makes a district funding system work well. And there's three aspects to a healthy funding system, no matter how you run it. The first thing is it's equitable. Resources go to schools based on the needs of students, or simply dollars follow the student. The second is it's transparent. You know why you get what you get. And we have, I tell the story all the time about a district we worked with where when they introduced fair student funding, one of the first things they noticed was that when budgets went out, school committee members, actually, didn't call the CFO. The CFO was like, nobody from the school board called me. And nobody from the school board called him when budgets went out, because principals didn't call their school board members to lobby for more, which is how it used to work. And the reason they didn't do that is because they might not have liked what they got, but they understood what they got, and they understood why they got it. And so that transparency piece is actually a huge part of this. With fair student funding, there's a formula, and the formula tells you what you get. It's very clear to everybody. The third piece is flexibility, and this is the site-based budgeting part of the system. And so once I've distributed resources equitably based on student need, and you know why I get them, then we create a process where principals can own their budgets. So in a traditional world, if you ask a principal how much their budget is, they'll say like $50,000, because they're thinking about the things they actually have control over. The reality is a school is a two or three or four or five million dollar operation. And so part of the effort here is to empower principals to use their resources in ways that best serve their students. And that's where the flexibility piece comes in. So we're going to go a little bit into the weeds, just so we can see and conceptualize what the shift is. So what you see on the left here is the way most school districts allocate resources to schools. They allocate staff, right? Say, okay, you know, Boyd Elementary is going to get 40 teachers, and they qualify by size for three assistant principals, and counselors, and secretaries, and so on and so on, and every other school gets that, and, and then, oh, by the way, you get some non-staff money, and that's what principals think of as their budget. So everything's sort of set for you, it's set centrally, right? Student-based budgeting is different, because what we're doing is we're actually monetizing, changing into dollars, the resources that schools get, and you do it based on the needs of students. So in the example you see here, this is a district that said, look, every student, what we call a 1.0, a Jan Ed student, gets $4,250 follows them. But then there's these increments that follow. We had, in this particular district, we've said, students who are testing below proficient, we're going to put more money towards the school to support those students. Students who are economically disadvantaged, students who are English language learners. And that adds up to a dollar amount. Schools receive those dollars. Now, principals have flexibility in a site-based budget over what they do with those dollars, but they can't just do anything, right? There's still rules and guidelines about what they, they need to do and can do. And so the, the art of this is ensuring that the resources are distributed equitably, transparently, and that the flexibilities for principals are clear, and the supports for them are clear, so principals who know their schools best have the ability to use those resources to best serve their students within the guidelines and parameters that exist at a system level. I'm going to look for questions as we go. Is that appropriate protocol, Mr. Ray? Okay. So we talk about this idea of transparency and this issue of student weights. And so the question becomes, in each district, one of the big decisions, and a decision that you will, you will look at as a school committee is, well, how should we decide which students or, or schools with which students get more resources? How should resources be distributed to students? So what you're seeing here is several districts that have rolled out fair student funding, and the types of weights they have chosen to apply. So many districts will say, well, not all of our students are, are coming from low-income households, we want to ensure that we know, we, we think on average it costs more to support a student coming from a low-income household, therefore, schools with more, students from low-income households should get more, let's have the dollars follow the students. Some districts will say, well, there's English language learners, or they'll look at student performance, or students with disabilities. Sometimes you look at specific grade levels. Okay, we're trying to make a big investment in early elementary, let's put more money towards that. And then there are other factors that, that districts come into play. And there's a set of criteria that we, we share with, with district leaders and with everybody who reads our, our content about how you choose these weights, but knowing, thinking about what are the factors that you want to include as weights for that transparency will be an important policy decision that gets made at the district level, and that I suspect the superintendent would be reviewing with this group as you move through the process. It is one, but not the only one, of the factors that we think about here. So in our pursuit of equity, what we have to recognize is that the situation may not be equitable today, right? A school with relatively low student need may actually be getting a lot more, a lot of money, and a school with relatively high student need may not be getting money that is, or resources that are commensurate with that need. So when you introduce this new process, you have to find a way to get to equity while ensuring that you're not radically shifting resources, right? It takes a few years to move to that equity place. And so the types of issues that become big decisions at a district level, part of it is the equity piece, which are the weights, and the factors there are the student need weights, which we just talked about, but also this idea of a base weight, which is basically saying, what's the minimum that follows any student? There's all kinds of fun technical issues that Ms. Turner and her team are getting into about how we get there right now, but those become critical factors, right? So everybody from a transparency standpoint will know X thousand dollars follows every student, and depending on the needs of those students, additional hundreds or thousands of dollars will follow, that rolls up to a school budget. The other pieces are the policies that help you maintain stability. There's two factors here. One is this idea of what we call baseline services. So this is basically, what does it take to run the school? What is the minimum bar to keep a school open? So this becomes particularly important with small schools, right? The dollars that I allocate to your school, if you only have 200 kids, might not add up to enough to actually run your school. Can I, do I have enough money for teachers and a principal? Or whatever the services you describe are baseline services? The decision that the district team makes about what means baseline is an important thing to think about, because it's basically the, what does it take to run a school? And you will make investments potentially to prop up, to invest in schools, to get them to baseline, if they, if the formula wouldn't get them there, often by virtue of size. The last big policy decision is what we call transition policy. So this is an issue, basically, how much are we willing to let schools shift from year to year, right? So if my school has been overfunded, according to the new formula, by 12, by, by 30%, which translates to, you know, convert that to teachers or other positions, whatever, or dollars, whatever you want, it is difficult to take that all away from a school one year. It's also frankly difficult to add that much into a school in one year. And so you design policies around how much, how much shifting are we willing to tolerate year to year? And it's the, the, the combination of these factors, right? What are your weights? What, what equates to baseline? What are your transition policies that create sort of the foundations of the system? And once you, as a school committee, have engaged in the process of aligning on what, with the, with the superintendent's team on what the systemic rules of the road are, then you can run the system, and it gets us all out of the, the nitty-gritty of, well, why did you get this, and why did you get that, and who's lobbying for which? It creates a lot more clarity and transparency, and folks can focus on, well, how are we going to use the resources we have to do what's best for kids? So there is a theory in this that all dollars in schools should be allocated via a student-based budgeting or fair student funding formula, and that's the ideal. But we want to recognize a couple of factors in a district. One, some percentage of your resources are not spent in schools. You run buses, we actually keep things like food services out of this typically, you have district leadership, you run, you have utilities that are used system-wide, there's a whole set of things. So the first thing is our, our pie is actually just the green portion of the pie on the left. And then the second piece is, so what proportion of that will actually go through your fair student funding process, and what part won't? And so what you see here are examples from a few other districts with whom we've worked, say what percentage in blue actually goes through the fair student funding formula? And it ranges between 40 and as high as 75% of school monies. Your goal would be to try to make that number as high as possible, but also to be very clear about why sometimes you won't. So for example, certain title dollars associated, or IDEA dollars associated with serving students with disabilities, many districts don't put that through the formula, because those are, there are already prescribed rules at a, at a, at a government level on how those dollars get allocated and spent. Some systems will try ultimately to get to a place where that's part of the formula, and I think that's, that's maximum transparency, and that's the ideal. But I want to recognize that where you're going to start is some portion of school-based resources, hopefully at least half, hopefully potentially even more, will go through your formula. And each year, Ms. Turner and Superintendent Boyd and the team will look for ways to say, how do we empower principals more? How do we put more money into the pool for fair student funding? Again, to empower principals to do the work they need to do with their site-based budget. So one of the values that we try to bring into this work are these types of benchmarks to guide Ms. Turner and her team, so that they have a sense of what to aim for, what to expect, and what to, how to compare to what else has gone on around the country, so we can stand on the shoulders of leaders who have done this work before. So the flexibility piece of this, I want to get a little bit specific on. So we have described on the prior page that some portion of school resources will go, quote, "through the formula." Another word for that is they're unlocked, right? And there's some portion that won't. And so here are some examples, and again, in our guides and in the work we do with Ms. Turner and her team, describe what are the criteria for making these decisions, because you make these decisions, and the district leaders make these decisions at a district level. But here are some examples of some of the things that tend to be unlocked and go through the formula, and some things that often don't. So I mentioned certain types of special ed positions, title funds, turnaround funds. Sometimes that gets held centrally. Some districts hold things like nurses and custodians centrally, and say, we have a scale benefit to how we do that, it's not, it's not optional, it is what it is, we're going to lock it. But the resources that get unlocked are clearly your core teachers, your art, music, PE teachers, school administration, paraprofessionals, media specialists, athletics, things like that, because what the need is for those, for those resources may vary from school to school. Now, I mentioned at the beginning of this, there are rules of the road, right? We are not in a place where you can, you're going to have class sizes of 80, presumably, right, in a traditional model. So clearly, the principals have to abide by those rules of the road, but there's a lot of flexibility that can exist within what is feasible. And so the idea, again, is to be clear about these, these flexibilities, identify the resources over which there's flexibility, put that through the formula, and that becomes the work of what principals are doing to ensure they use resources to best meet student needs. So I've gotten a little bit into the weeds here, but this gives you a little bit of the kinds of work and the kinds of questions that Ms. Turner and her team are going to be engaging in, as they also bring the higher-level policy issues to the fore in your ongoing So I want to share one quick example of how this can work, and we're going to look at this in concept, not in numbers. So I want you to imagine for a moment two elementary schools, and the needs of students in those schools might be different enough that the way they design those schools, what we call school design, or the school strategies, might vary, right? So in this case, in school one, they're really focused on differentiation of instruction for kids, as an example. And they want to ensure that the way in which they, they sort of use the resources within the school is very clearly aligned with particular goals. In, in elementary school two, their focus is on improving overall quality of instruction and, and adult culture, and they're focusing on collaborative planning time for teachers at all grade levels, and they want to invest more in parent engagement and bring parents more into the community, into the school community. So all of these things are worthwhile strategies and investments, but the ways you would go about them, implementing them, would be different. And that's exactly the kind of flexibility we want to give principals. So the school on the left, the first school, their approach in this model, and this is drawn from real schools that we have, have, have worked with, they're focused on differentiation, they're particularly focused on it at the early elementary level, they are going to add more first and second grade teachers to get really smaller class sizes there, as one example. At the same time, the school on the right would say, we're going to maintain our student-teacher ratio, but we're going to add enough staff in other places that allow us to have coverage so that our teachers can meet for longer periods of time to engage in the kind of collaborative planning that we think they need to do to improve overall quality of instruction. Again, the universe of strategies that these schools are, are choosing are all within the world of what we would call strategic school design, but it's tailored for the need, and it has budget implications, and that's exactly what this work is about. So again, we started by saying this isn't just a budget exercise, it's about resources in schools, which is the people, time, and the money, and how that affects the student experience. These are the examples of how that plays out. Last point I want to leave you with is, fair student funding is a piece of the equation, site-based budgeting is a piece of the equation. What's happening here in Lowell is putting them together, and putting them together and seeing that through is part of a cohesive strategy of climbing this proverbial mountain. So we do see some districts say, look, if I just do fair student funding, I will, I will see higher improvement in my schools. And we would be the first people to say, that's not true. You might, but you have to actually increase flexibility for principals, you have to support those principals in applying ways of more strategically using resources. You've got to do that in a way that actually affects instruction, and then you start to see change, and you need to repeat that and sustain it and, and continue it over time. And so that's why we talk about fair student funding and site-based budgeting together, and the district and school level supports that go with it. Our focus with, with the team from an ERS standpoint will be on how do you get the bottom, the, the bottom of the pyramid going, the fair student funding piece? And then as site-based budgeting continues to roll out and capacity of principals continues to grow, I think you'll start to see more and more of this other work happening, I believe. Yes, don't stop there. So over the next few months, there's a few decisions that you're going to be addressing. These are the ones I mentioned earlier, and Ms. Turner, I'd encourage you to chime in if there's things you want to add here. Some pieces are the formulas. What are the weights? What are the policies? And then the other piece is the flexibilities in thinking about what kinds of decisions do you want school leaders to make? There is a level of depth and nuance and technical detail in all of that, that is, I believe, going to be the province of Ms. Turner's team, and they, when we see this work well, we see the teams use that as an opportunity to elevate and engage district leaders and school committee members in conversations about what do you want the system to look like? Because once you build the system, you can run the system in a way that actually is helpful for all kids. Let me pause there and see if there's anything you would like to add, or any questions?
Any questions?
So I want to thank you, David, for the presentation, and committee members, as you offer up questions or just digest the information, I want you to keep two things in mind. First, we're going to chunk this in a way that we can make sure that we're teaching the entire organization about how we enact this change. I've committed to this community that we are going to be the highest-performing school district in the state, but I've also been very clear that that's going to be a 10-year endeavor, that what we're doing here is setting the stage for long-term improvement. This is not a simple switch that we're going to flip. This is not a simple switch that we're going to flip overnight. Our job and the core of our work is around teaching and learning. Teaching and learning are about the interaction between the student and the teacher around the content. What we're doing is structuring and creating a system that supports that interaction in an optimal way. We're never going to have enough money to do every single thing that we want to do for every single kid. The Opportunity Act is a really positive step forward. We really thank our local delegation. But I can tell you, I was just going through back-of-napkin math, and for the many things that this community knows its needs and the many things that this committee knows our school needs, there's no way that that amount of money is going to be finding its way in. So the next question is, who makes those decisions? And we believe that the people closest to our children, our teachers, our parents, our principals, are best positioned to make the unique decisions that each unique school community needs made with the constrained resources they're going to have in front of them. So with that, I open the floor to questions, knowing the expectation is not that you are experts in site-based budgeting and fair student funding as the result of even six months of conversation. We're going to continue down this path. This is just one presentation, and I really want to thank ERS for joining us in this long-term strategy for improvement here in Lowell.
Thank you. Open it up to Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I'd add my thanks for the preliminary materials that you shared, which I thought were really very instructive. I appreciated that, and having you here tonight to kind of present them was very helpful. I think this is, I'm thrilled with this. I mean, I just think this is the exact direction we should be moving in with our budgeting. And I think that, you know, I'm recognizing that this is kind of our first step. The next logical step of this is that it gets tied to outcome measures, is that as principals are defining what's important, working with Dr. Gilleri, that, you know, those two sides of the equation, I am confident will get tied together. Because that's really how principals, over the course of ten years, on our trip to being the best in the world, are going to be able to track that. What I would love to be able to do, as we kind of, really from the very beginning, as we start this process, is make it as public and as instructive as we possibly can. What I can really envision going through this process includes our parent site councils, that whole kind of now empowered group of individuals who'll be part of this process, parents, teachers, administrators. In addition to them being part of crafting this, I think they need to be part of presenting it. I think that for each one of our schools, there should be a budget defense, where they are presenting to their school community why they made the decisions that they made. And I think that that's really going to be the way that we're able to give them an opportunity to have a real-world impact on their schools. And I think it gives our principals and the leadership and teachers and all the staff within that school an opportunity to not only have a, you know, voice, we talk about that a lot, but to really have a concrete impact on how monies are being spent and taking responsibility for it. That if this decision is made to get rid of one para or one media specialist, replace that with something else that's being presented, there's a budget narrative that goes along with that, so that the reasoning behind it is made in real-world terms that parents can, you know, kind of work with. And then, in a year, you have to report on it. You have to say why you made that decision and how it was impactful. And I think that's kind of the big picture win that we see in this. And I don't usually get this animated about budgets, but I really do think this is a very exciting path for us. One tiny little thing that I see such potential for is having substitutes in that zone where you get to assign, where the school is making decisions. I mean, if I'm in that situation, and I'm a member of that school community, and I'm recognizing that the more I'm out, the less money my school has to spend on maybe some other priorities, maybe I'm being overly optimistic. But, I mean, I think that level of, it's not a level of control, it's a level of responsibility. And I think that's what this could really promote for us, you know, throughout, at every level of stakeholder in our community. So again, I don't usually get this excited about budget stuff, but I really do think that this is a phenomenal way for us to be moving forward. And I think it's huge. I mean, it will take so much work to launch this, so I appreciate having experts coming in to help us with that, from the school community perspective, but more importantly, I think for all the staffing and the parents will be part of this. But looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, no.
Green light, son.
I think I got it. Thank you. I have to agree. I think this is a great program. I guess my question would be, is there an element that not punishes, but, you know, high-performing schools get less money in the future? I mean, or is that something that we can work out with just how we set up our priorities? I mean, is that?
I think one part of this is that, and I've migrated financial systems in this direction before, is that you can really only do this type of migration in a good budget year, which was part of the reason for us to tackle this so quickly, because we knew this was going to be a good budget year, because we can actually set the parameter here this year to say, nobody loses anything. The second part of that, Committee Member Dillon, would be that, yes, you are flexibility within the weights. You would stay away from school-based indicators. So whether the school is high-performing, that wouldn't matter here. It would be about the needs of kids. So to take a little bit of leeway, just to add another part to it, so if your question was about schools that have lesser need populations compared to a school that has higher need populations, yes, if a school has an extraordinarily high concentration of need, they would, as a result, get more. And if a school had a low concentration of high-need students, they might get less. But it's regardless of how well they've been serving the population before. We have actually some schools here that have high concentrations of high need and have been performing well. They actually may, as a result, see more. But that also starts to roll out in terms of the weights. What we can do, and the opportunity we have with ERS's expertise and background in this, is we can roll our data through multiple scenarios that they have in other districts and see kind of the what-if scenarios. What would happen if we went in this direction versus that one? And see how that works for the committee when you weigh the policies that'll enable us to transition from what is a highly centralized system right now to a school-based system.
All right. Yeah, no, that was, that explained it very well. Thank you.
Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to start by saying I share my colleagues' enthusiasm. I think this is the right way to go in terms of our overall goal for equity and that all our schools are high-performing schools. I have to say, I have some concerns, because I think we have a steep learning curve and a short timeline. We are a district that hasn't even had active school site councils at every one of our schools. And although I embrace the concept, I guess I'm looking for, my question to you, sir, would be, what is ERS involvement going to look like for us in the, I mean, I understand you've done it before, Dr. Boyd, but I think, I'm thinking about our principals, I'm thinking about those parents out there that we've got to bring in and arm them with the skills and knowledge to be, you know, active school site deciders, school site council deciders, and just this body alone. So an ELL student gets a point, you know, gets five cents more for every, you know, there's a lot of learning we need to do. So I wonder if you could speak to the supports that ERS is going to be providing us, what that will look like in the immediate and, you know, perhaps down the road as well? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. So I would start by reiterating Dr. Boyd's point, that in no system have we seen anyone flip a switch, and boom, it's done. So this is a multi-year process of moving from, what does year one look like, both in terms of the technical aspects, what's in your formula, and how do resources go out, as well as some of the adaptive and strategic aspects of what do you do with the resources in schools? So I think you have to look at this over whatever timeline the district leadership wants to look at it over, but it's not immediate. We've been contracted specifically to focus on the finance team aspect of this in terms of getting the process for allocating resources and the policies in place and building the team's skill set to be able to run that in the next three to four months. We do work with other districts around seeing that through over multiple years. And in Memphis, we're in the process of running budget workbooks for the third year in a row. We're building the capacity of that team to do it. They still rely on us to help with that. That's not, optimally, that becomes district responsibility.
We're better than Memphis.
So it'll be less than three years. And we've deliberately, and the team has deliberately structured this work to be focused on building capacity within the district to lead it. Last thing I'll say in this is, I mentioned at the beginning, as a not-for-profit organization, everything we do is there. Our first core value is impact. So, and we don't operate particularly transactionally, in terms of like, well, you can't call when the contract ends. But all the materials are there, the examples are there, the tools are there, both on the school design side and for site-based budgeting, and on the fair student funding side. And so while our specific contract is focused on finance teamwork over the next three to four months, we will be teeing up other questions and issues and resources for the team to use as they see fit.
Sure.
I just wanted to reassure you that, as he indicated, there are three goals, right? Equity, transparency, and flexibility. We're hoping that this first year will have complete transparency, most likely, complete equity. The flexibility piece, the way we're going to hold the reins so that we don't just do a free-for-all is keep some control over the flexibility. We may give them teachers, a pool of money for teachers, but we'll do a guardrail. The word they used is a guardrail. We might put a policy in place that said, you must have four first-grade teachers. So we're still going to have controls over the bucket of money that they do have access to. It's a learning process for the school or the principal, too. So they'll get the money with some controls, and every year, we'll release more and more control over those funds. So we're going to be careful, so that the training and, you know, and control is released at the same time.
Yeah, there's, the language we use in the classroom is independent level and instructional level. The independent level is the pace at which you can go without guidance. Instructional level is another level above that, where you can move at a pace with the teacher. We're not going to get to the next level, which is a level of frustration, but we're going to try to push ourselves to that instructional level. If we're going at a pace that doesn't require the guidance of the external consultant, the guidance of this continuous training, we're moving a little too slow. If we're going at a pace where everyone's just too frustrated, then we're moving too fast. And this is going to be movement in a direction where we can constantly gauge as we go, slow down, speed up, throughout. I will also tell you, the other resource we have is Ms. Phillips to my left, who has led a similar-sized community through the community engagement site counseling process. Massachusetts site councils are a little different than that state by statute, but the process is very similar. The goals, the outcomes are very similar. So once questions resolve on the financial and technical side, she'll share a little bit about what that'll look like to bring our community on board with this process as well in year one and then going forward. It's not a rip the Band-Aid, but we want to rip enough to motivate. So we got to figure out what that balance is.
Any other questions? I just had a quick question, if you don't mind. So I understand the instructional part. Does this affect if a question came up about certain schools that have a band? What if one school doesn't want to have a band? Are we going to open up our libraries? What if one school opens up a library and another school doesn't? How does that affect the equity?
Yeah, so it really depends on what are the guardrails that you set up, that the district leadership set up for how schools use the resources, right? So it, you know, what we sometimes think of as equity of like, well, every kid should have access to band, is actually equality, and the equity is more about, well, given the resources we have, what's the right, what are the right trade-offs to make in this school? Because to Dr. Boyd's point, we never have enough to do all the things that we want. You might decide, as a school, as a district leadership in a community, that every school should have a library, it should have a full-time librarian, and the library should meet the following criteria: that is non-negotiable, that is a guardrail, or maybe that's even a locked resource. You may say, you know what? There's a lot of ways for kids to get access to literature and to the resources that are in libraries and the research skills that they get. Principal X, if you come up with a way to do this that involves thinking differently about your library, that's an unlocked resource for you. And so those are some of the flexibility decisions that the district team will be reviewing over the next few months to play back as policies.
Okay. And obviously, Dr. Boyd, that would affect whatever the policy is for students transferring, whether they go to, say, their neighborhood school, or they want to transfer to a school that has a library open, or?
Yeah, so a lot of these things come together to create a system of excellence across. And you remember, we use the language of high-performing seats. Different seats mean different things to different kids. So, you know, you may have a family that chooses a school because of the program offerings. If we get to a place, as a district, I will tell you, where families are choosing schools based on the relevance of program offerings, we're very close to starting to achieve our goal of a high-performing system, because right now, families are choosing seats based on their perception of what's good and what's not as good as, without necessarily a full consideration of what program offerings are there. So yes, Mr. Mayor, if we are able to create a system here where communities are able to design programming that is really compelling programming, meets the needs of a community, and we're able to articulate that out to new and incoming students, and then families can make decisions about what's there, and then have a voice about what's there into the future, now we've created a structure that works. I will tell you the second part to David's response. You're always going to find me in a place of saying, let's give school communities complete flexibility. Generally, school committees and others push on me to say, here's where this guardrail needs to be. So I would expect there to be a little bit of a deliberative discourse on that, and that that's part of our process for going forward. My perspective comes from the perspective of having been a teacher and a principal. And having been a teacher and a principal, I was always one that said, allow me to make decisions about the needs of my kids. All of you bring a different perspective of how Lowell operates, and we'll be looking for that conversation as we start to set our transition policy here that's going to make sense for the communities you represent, as well as the communities we serve within our schools.
And with, moving forward, too, we'll have that discussion on, I mean, that affects your busing and your school choice and all that, so that could get complicated, but the discussion down the road.
Year eight or nine on that one, maybe not month two or three. Mr. Mayor, we'll get the system up and going, and then if we can get all of this operating well, yeah, we're going to try to chunk this in a way that we can actually also manage. In some cases, we just simply don't have the infrastructure set to allow that flexibility out entirely. So in some of those cases, Mr. Mayor, we actually would have to start creating the infrastructure to enable that to go forward. But yeah, you're thinking right about where we might be in year 2030.
Okay. Maybe I'll still be around, but, all right, thank you. We all sat with this, and we're on to reports.
We could. I wanted to make sure that Ms. Phillips could share with you what the process will look like, so that we can bring the full community into the decision-making process at schools, if that's all right with the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. So there's a memo in your packet relating to school site councils. And fair student funding, site-based budgeting is an opportunity to really strengthen our school site councils at each of our schools. So similar to rolling out fair student funding, this is going to be a process in strengthening each school's site council, because every school is at a different level. So I have here January through April in the memo. So in January, I'm working with Dr. Gilleri and the school's office to assess where each of our schools is at with the school site councils. Once we understand and have analyzed that, we really want to support our schools with the recruitment of candidates for open seats and the process for the seats being filled. The process is pretty clearly laid out in the legislation on how to fill these seats. But again, it may not work perfectly this year, but our goal is to have site councils at each school, and then to be able to reflect on how do we do it better and strengthen it for the next year. So there will be a training for principals at their monthly professional development session around school site council requirements, so that we can... around school site council requirements so that we can make sure that those councils have the right seats of teachers, family, community represented on those councils. In February, all of the school site councils should be finalized. Also, working with schools around their websites and our webmaster around ensuring that this information is easy to find on our websites, especially as this is a major initiative, how do we make that information more pronounced over especially the next couple of months? Just the opportunity to serve, the posting of agendas, the minutes, the timeline. So we really want to make sure that that information is available and accessible to families and community members. Also, in February, offering training to the school site council. So once the principal has been able to solidify the team, we'd like to come and provide training to the entire team, especially in this area. This is a major task for this committee. And so making sure that they understand what is fair student funding, what is site-based budgeting. Also, development of school plans and priorities. So how to understand the data of their, of their school, of their students, how to identify achievement and opportunity gaps and disproportionalities so that they can start thinking about, you know, how to best serve the school from an equity lens, right? What are the needs of the students in each school building? March, there would be that continuation of the development of school plans and priorities. And then schools would be receiving their preliminary budget allocations. So now it's turning from learning about the process to actually implementing and working with the process. We'll be offering central office budget support drop-in sessions for our schools and school site councils and also supporting school stakeholder outreach and input. So this is the opportunity, even though there's a school site council that is having the formal discussion, the formal meeting similar to this, there's always that opportunity for extended school engagement in the process. So that would happen in March. In April, we look for the final budget decisions to be made. The school site council sign-off of the budget process. And then the individual budget review and collaboration with central office. So that's each school building coming and presenting the budget to a centralized team and explaining how the decisions were made, what are the goals that have been set and how the funding has been used to support the strategic goals of the school. And once the budgets have been approved, Dr. Boyd and Ms. Turner will be presenting the full district budget to the school committee for approval. In May, you'll see that we have a debrief session. I think it's always important to come back and say, "Okay, this happened quickly. We made it happen. How do we do it better next year?" So really being intentional about improving that process and not losing that opportunity to strengthen school site councils for May. I mean, for 2020, 2021. And I also want to share that I have been working with our citywide family council. We're still working on, you know, what is the best way for us to collaborate and support each other in this process? But I've been very encouraged by the passion and the commitment of the citywide family council and looking forward to our continued work.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Yes, I just have a couple of comments. The other night, I believe at 151 Merrimack Street, they had a citywide parent council meeting on school site councils. I didn't know, I wanted to know if you knew how that was well-attended or not. And another thing, I looked up permission event to find out how much ERS is going to cost, and I couldn't find that. Is there a cost on that? There's any, it must be a cost, right?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
Just curious. I like the idea of all this, but I-
Forty-nine thousand five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
The school committee approved that on August 21st.
Yep, I was just looking for the price of it. Thank you very much.
I would tell you here, and I want to make sure I'm clear with the community, we have a, every time we try something new, we make sure we remind ourselves not to let good be the enemy of perfect. We're not shooting for perfection here. We're trying to make sure that we set the stage for long-term improvement. All of you know, I lost a brother far too young. He had something hanging in his office that now hangs in my office that says, "You can't hit unless you swing." We may foul off a couple of pitches, but we're taking a hack at it here, and eventually, we're going to hit it out of the park. Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Darney?
I think you're on to one quick question. And regarding the school site council law in Massachusetts, do you know if there's a term attached to that? Because I'm thinking, if, once we get these school site councils established, if people could commit to two years, if our, if our parents and our teachers, and I don't know if the law stipulates a timeline because I don't remember that. So I'm wondering if Ms. Johnson knows that.
I'm looking it up.
Me? Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Phillips, yes. I think, I think she was referring to Ms. Phillips, yes.
Sure, so I would have to check on that term limit. But I hear what you're saying about stability.
I think you're a big fan of LBJ, maybe. I don't know. There's a, I'm not sure. But I will tell you this. We're all becoming really well-versed in the school site council law because of the number of questions that we're getting now about school site councils. So we are seeing an added level of interest across the community. I'm not yet sure whether that interest is only within a few certain school communities or whether it's broader across, but we'll, we'll learn that. But I have found myself in more conversations about school site council as people are learning that they're going to be empowered with some flexibility around their budget. So that's a good thing, at the very least.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clark?
In February, it notes the training of school site councils. And is that, that was in addition to last night? Was last night more of an info session? This was the citywide family council meeting. So this will be, is this bringing together the actual school site councils?
Yes, the full council.
Thank you.
Also want to recognize Paul Georges is here. UTL has also raised their hand in addition to the citywide family council as offering to be a core partner in lifting the school site councils across the district. Mickey Dumont, the director of operations for UTL, has been kind enough to offer up that partnership. So thank you, Paul, for that as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to reports and motions.
Thank you. The reports are in your packet. You know, we, for the new committee members, as you bring a motion, it'll find itself into that table that's within your packet. As a result of Committee Member Dougherty's request, as a new motion is resolved or responded to, you'll see it also show up as a subheader within as you bring a motion. And I was also, the mayor and I were talking through other ways that we can continue to improve the transparency of this process and the efficiency of this process. So if you have any thoughts about how we continue to improve this, the mayor has some great ideas, and we're going to continue to evolve this in a way that works for the committee and the community. It's before you, for your acceptance here tonight within the table.
Ms. Martin?
I would say, historically speaking, that this report was the brainchild of John Leahy when he was a school committee member. So he crafted it from the very beginning. We have come to rely on it. And here we go, making it even better now that you've returned.
Thank you. Quarterly reports. Any further on this? List of eligible teachers.
Thank you. The next two, Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to them together. These are formalities, procedural requirements for us to bring to you as a committee. Dr. Hall's available if you have any questions, but we present them to you for approval.
I just have one question on the personnel report. I noticed the dates were all like August, September. So usually, they're more up to date, aren't they?
Thank you. I believe this is in regard to the timing that we're required to cut it off to bring to you. But Dr. Hall, if you could share, there are some cutoff dates that are where we benchmark these for your attention. Dr. Hall?
That's correct. That's what we did do, but we could provide more updated information soon.
Well, I guess my question would be, do these reports come out every? So I'm going back eight years or so. These used to come out like every other meeting, and so the days, are we doing it differently now? Like giving them out every?
We're up to full power now in HR, so they will come out pretty regularly now. We've got all our people in place.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Motion to accept the reports by the superintendent, eight, one through eight. Eight reports as reports of progress. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Nine, new business. Nine, one revision of school assignment policy file, JCA.
Thank you. There's a visual that Ms. Phillips will be loading. This school assignment policy has made its way through the subcommittee process, has been discussed. I believe everybody's feedback has been incorporated. This policy has to be approved, if any adjustments are going to be made, ahead of our next meeting so that we can actually get in the process of school choice and assignment for next year. So, two things I want to point out. We're bringing it to you with the recommendation for approval. However, I would ask, if the committee does not feel that that's, that it's ready, that we set up some special meetings perhaps ahead even of our next one so that we can get this going. Ms. Phillips is going to share with you a visual of the adjustments that were made. This is not an overhaul of the policy as a, if you recall from our prior discussions. These were some adjustments for improvement that were made through the subcommittee process and being brought by staff. So the visual to you just shares what are the changes and why so that you don't have to read through all of the language changes. Sometimes policies can become wordy, as is the case here when there's a lot of legal parameters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. It may be too small for you to see, but I'll talk through each of these areas. These are the changes that were discussed at the, at the subcommittee meeting. And you'll see that the new language is in red. However, it's not all completely new. In some cases, it's a documenting process that's been happening, and we wanted to put it on paper. So I will talk you through the document. I did give you a hard copy, which is numbered by page. The red font is the new language that we had added to the old policy. And then there are four places where there's blue language where through feedback, it was recommended that we remove those lines. So I'll talk you through the document. So on page one, this is the preschool program. All of this was processed that was happening prior to this year. But in the spirit of providing more transparent and clear information to families, we wanted to have it documented within the policy. So you'll see the pre-K programs acknowledges that we have full-day and half-day programs to children four years old by September 1st. Nothing new about that. It's always been operating that way, but we wanted to make sure it was explicitly written in the policy. We also added information around students with individual education plans because we do serve some three-year-old students. But there are three-year-old students who have individual education plans. So we wanted to put that in here for families because there was some confusion over whether all three-year-olds could attend our programs. And we wanted to make clear that, yes, we do serve three- and four-year-olds, but we serve students specifically who have IEPs. We also wanted to be clear and transparent around the preregistration period for preschool. This was information that we were independently advertising, but we wanted to put it in the policy so that families could know what they could expect around the preregistration period. And then the preschool lottery. You'll see that that's one of the blue lines. That is, so in classroom assignment, we do consider gender. We do consider ethnicity balance, but it was not a line that needed to be in the policy for school assignment. So that's a strike through. But otherwise, it's just sharing that we hold a policy that, that students are assigned via the policy and they're given a number and waitlisted.
So I'm not seeing anything that's blocked out in blue? I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong. It's all red. There's no-
This is in the handout that I-
Oh, that you handed out, not the one online?
Right, because I wanted to make sure that it had the numbers and that it was clear and transparent for you.
Same content, no different content. It's a little bit clearer so that you can follow along with the presentation that she's sharing.
I've got this, yeah.
So that was pages one and two, the red language. Attendance was an area that we shared that we were adding. Again, families, there was no expectation around how do you, how could schools disenroll a student if they didn't show up to school? And so it was following the K-12 process of 15 days consecutive absence. But pre-K is not compulsory, and we need families to share with us sooner if they are not intending to take the seat so that we can provide the seat for families who are waiting on the waiting list. So in this, this includes the language that parents have to share with families within, or with the school within five days, whether they are intending to come or not. So even if you're planning to be late, we just need you to let us know. After the five days, we would reassign your seat. But this is information that would be included in the, in the letter that families are given when they're assigned the seat. We also included that children with unexcused absences of more than 10% of the total days of school would be provided with written notice and potentially could be disenrolled. But it, yes.
Sure, Ms. Darney?
I have a question on that piece. So when you say 10% of schools, do you mean attendance? Do you mean 10% of 185 days of school? Because that would be like a lot of days.
So this is aligned with, so this language is aligned with the district's attendance policy, but we had not transferred it to pre-K. So because pre-K is not compulsory, some students were coming, sometimes they weren't coming, and the days were adding up, and we have waitlists sometimes where families want to come. So the intention is not to disenroll students. The intention is to-
Emphasize attendance.
Emphasize it, have those discussions with families and let them know, "It's not compulsory. We want you to be here, taking advantage of these opportunities. But if you cannot get here and there's a long waitlist, we do want to make sure that that opportunity is available for other children."
I understand why we made the change regarding the attendance requirement. I totally support it. My question is, to me, that seems like a lot of days out before we actually do anything. Because if you're saying 10% of the total number of days that children attend, that's 18 absences if we count 180 days before we speak to them?
But that's by the time you get to the end of the school year. So wherever you benchmark the conversation, 10% of that. So if you're having a conversation at 30 days,
Okay.
10% of 30, this is-
That was my question. So you're saying 10% of the amount of days we've had of school?
Correct.
So if it's one month in and they've already been absent three days, we're going to reach out to the parent and say, you know, "Attendance is important. We need you to bring your child to school." Got it? That was really what my question-
Thank you, I apologize.
Because I'm thinking, if you're not going to reach out till 18 days, you know, we've missed the opportunity to maybe fill that seat with this child that's going to come or alert the parent how important attendance is.
Sure.
I absolutely support the move. I think it's definitely the way we should go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on page three, kindergarten registration and lottery. So in the prior, in the prior version of our policy, we do provide specific dates, but it didn't always align year to year. We can say March 1st, but March 1st might be on a weekend, right? So instead, we said, "We'll-" So, instead, we said, we'll inform you of this no later than, and we, we also specify to families where they can expect to get, expect to get this information. So, for example, no later than May first, you will hear about the lottery deadline and you can find it on the website and on Twitter and we're also going to send a flyer home. So, that's setting the expectation for what families can expect from us around communication. On pages four to five, and I'm sorry, I want, actually, I skipped the, the transfer applications and lottery. So, I want to be clear that we have added the new language here around preregistration. So, in prior years, families were waitlisted based on the registrate, the preregistration date. So, the first person who came through the door to preregister, if you didn't get a seat, you were then placed on the waitlist. This year, when the preregistration window is open, everyone will enter the lottery and you'll either get into the lottery or you'll be waitlisted. It doesn't matter whether you came on the first day of preregistration, on the 15th day of preregistration. Anyone within the preregistration period has the opportunity to get a seat and to, to be, to be entered on the waitlist according to the lottery. Anyone who, anyone who registers after the lottery would then be added to the waitlist based on the date of registration. So, if prereg, preregistration ends, for example, on May first and you come on May second, you would be the first person on the waitlist after everyone in the lottery. Does that make sense?
I'm actually trying, trying to understand the difference between preregistration and registration.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same process, right? It's just a matter of, you've set a date, a deadline date, so...
Right, so families want to know where their children are going to school. So, we have to have a preregistration time period, so that we can tell you in advance where you're going to school. Once that prereg, so during that preregistration period, if the number of registrations exceed the number of seats available, we have to have a lottery.
I, I understand that portion of it, it's just the...
Right, so following the preregistration period, you can come at any time, you can come in June, you can come August first, you can come September first and register, but the lottery is over. So, the lottery takes place after the preregistration period. So, one of the areas that we are really looking to strengthen is our communication around the preregistration period, because we are finding that there are disproportionate number of families who are higher socioeconomic, who know to ask about the preregistration period and the lottery. So, we have a goal this upcoming year, that any four-year-old, any five-year-old who is going to be eligible for kindergarten, we want to get that message out to everyone, every pre-K, every Head Start, daycare, come and preregister for whichever school you believe you would like to attend. And if the number of applications exceed the number of seats, we will run a lottery for every single kindergarten that exceeds the number of seats available. Currently, I believe we only run a lottery for four of our kindergartens, but we are really pushing for our families to come and know every single school, to understand what every single school has to offer, to meet the principal, the school staff, and then to make their decision.
Can I just jump in with a question? So, you're saying if you live in a certain neighborhood, you can go, you're eligible for any school in the city for kindergarten?
So, we have zones and citywide schools. So, if you live in a certain zone, you're eligible for the kindergartens with that, within that zone and the citywide school.
So, is that creating busing issues then? It's not a, is that, does that deal with our transportation?
It's the same, that's the same system we have currently, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't have an impact on transportation budget in one direction or the other. It keeps the same system of, of zones and citywide schools that we currently have in place. So, the, does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, and then the other question that I would ask too is, so, does it create the problem, again, if I live next to the school, I can't get a seat in the school next to me? How does that affect them?
Yeah, so we haven't, in this, in this case, that would be a larger scale conversation that we'd want to tackle within our strategic planning process. It's not one that we could resolve as quickly, what's determined through the subcommittee process previously, because we have to be able to get a policy in place that we can enact for next school year now. So, that conversation, that question is very real, depending on what the school is that's next to you. That may very well be, still be a tension point for some families. We haven't resolved that for all families. Here, what we've resolved are some of the smaller challenges within the enrollment process. The more macro challenges are going to require longer periods of time for us to enact, and that's one of the macro challenges, Mr. Mayor. There's many reasons for which a child may not gain access to the school that's closest to their home. There's a number of reasons there, we have not solved all of those reasons with this, these policy changes here.
Okay, I mean, I know I've been out of this for a while, but that always generally seems the big, big issue in, in the city of Lowell.
Yes.
People want to go to the school closest to them.
Yes, I believe that issue's been in place since like the 80s, right? Eight, 1988, I thought the number, the date was given to me.
Okay.
Before that, Mr. Dakota, somebody lied to me about 1988, I was only, you know, nine years old in 88, so I don't know, it was before that.
Okay, thank you.
Said that for you, Paul, you know.
So, at the bottom of page three and page four, you'll see grades one through eight, transfer applications and lottery, which is new language. So, again, the intention of this is to create greater access and equity in available seats for families. So, up to this point, are, the filling of our seats have really been driven by kindergarten waitlists. And so, the waitlists from kindergarten would roll over to each year and if you wanted to stay on the waitlist, you know, you didn't get the kindergarten you wanted, the list would roll over to first grade if you wanted to stay on it, it would roll, roll over to second grade if you wanted to stay on it. And it was really locking out anyone who was new to the district, was new to the zone, newcomers, anyone who didn't know about the lottery process. So, now for any incoming kindergarteners and anyone who is new to the district, every year, open seats from one to eight would follow the same preregistration and lottery process, to ensure that everyone has access to available seats and as seats become available in different schools. Now, we will honor the families who are on current waitlists. So, anyone who is sitting on a waitlist right now, we would follow the same policy from 2019 to 2020. So, they would be grandfathered into this process, but anyone new coming would follow the lottery process and then five years from now, there will be greater access and equity to these seats, because every year, we get many newcomers into our district and oftentimes they're, they're not able to get the school or the grade that they want, because the waitlist is already, you know, too long for them to ever have a shot at the waitlist. And siblings will continue to be prioritized within the waitlist process.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, just a question. So, each year, the waitlist will run out, you're saying, and it would be started over again the next year?
Right, so we would honor whoever's on the waitlist right now. So, if there's a school that has 10 kids on the waitlist for second grade, they'd stay on the waitlist, but if there were 10 more kids who moved into the district who said, I want to go to that school as well, they would enter into the lottery for seats 11 through 20, and then eventually, over time, the, everyone would be lotteryed in. So, five years, so five years from now, anyone who wants to go to first grade at any school would indicate, I'd like to transfer in, and we would follow the lottery process.
Are we, so we're eliminating the waitlist process eventually? Is that what you're saying?
Eliminating the rollover waitlist process.
Okay, so there's no benefit to having been on the waitlist for more than a year?
That's correct.
Is there, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, please continue.
On page five, again, we're reiterating, beginning with 2020, 2021, the waitlist will be generated by a lottery and that open seats would be filled by the lottery and students already on the waitlist will be honored in each year. On page six, publishing the waitlist, we are increasing accountability for the, for the office in stating that we will update the waitlist weekly. So, over the summer and as the school year approaches, our families are wanting to know, is the waitlist moving, is it moving? And we want to commit that we will be updating this, so that families can know as soon as possible the school that they'll be assigned to. And that's just our own increased transparency and improved communication. On page seven, only one transfer per year is allowed, that's actually continuing language. Currently, every family can transfer at least once during the open transfer period, if a seat is available. The new language is around the transfer cutoff date. The prior, or, well, the current policy states 36 days is the deadline. We have proposed 20th day and this was feedback from our schools who were participating in this transfer process. Kids were coming in really late, they were coming in after the state reporting period, they were coming in after the first progress report period and in order to ensure stability in the classroom and to support student learning, when we looked into why the 36th day was selected, we couldn't get a good reason for why. It seemed to be an arbitrary date that had been set and so 20th day is more of a standard day that is aligned with reporting progress reports and supporting student stability and learning. And then the last new section is grades nine through 12. The enrollment of high school is now a part of the Family Resource Center and this is just sharing with families that, that this is where they register. It encourages them to bring their transcripts at the time of registration, as high school rostering and scheduling is different from other grades. However, it also affirms that this will not delay students from attending high school. But again, if a family is reading this in advance of registering, that kind of triggers to them, oh, let me make sure I take my transcripts with me when I go to register. Students are also assigned to a house at the Family Resource Center, taking into place balance of students who have been identified within the McKinney-Vento homelessness program, foster care, special education, gender, and EL. And we have removed the red language of the transfers being approved by the Equity Office, because that's not the process. So, that was new language that was put in, that was not correct, that is now being withdrawn.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Howie?
I'm sorry, on page six, publishing the waitlist, is that new for the system?
So, that, it's not new, but we just wanted to assure families that we were regularly updating this information. So, we've always been posting it online, but haven't always been consistent in publishing it weekly. So, that's our commitment now, that, that's, that's our accountability, we're going to say it and we're going to do it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, just go back to the waitlist question that I was talking about earlier. So, I just want to try to get it straight. For example, a parent signs a child up, wants their child to go to a particular school and they get put on the waitlist, I mean, there's potential for them to try to get them into the school the next year, be on the waitlist the whole year, get on the school the next year, I mean, they could go through their whole time in little public schools not getting the wish, their wishes for the waitlist, right? I mean, I, that doesn't, I don't know, that doesn't seem, seem fair, I guess. I mean, that's the point of a waitlist, I, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, committee member Dillon, you're bringing up certainly a hypothetical that, of where this, the prior, how the prior process was set up. I think the balancing act here is that in some very real cases, we have some high demand schools that, where people sit on the waitlist for years and years, where they're never actually intending to go to the school, the current school that they're in is currently satisfactory, and then somebody new who wants to go is being told that they're number 12 on the waitlist, because there's 11 families who have been on there for four or five years. Each time we go then, a seat opens, we run down that entire list, call everybody's, every family, and in some cases, people have been on there for years, they don't have, take their names off the list, they're happy in their own school. So, there's, there is certainly with this policy, the, the situation you said, you suggested, I believe, is the rationale for the current policy. The situation that I just described, I think, was the discussion within subcommittee and prior that led to this adjustment. I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a give and take and whatever be the desire of the committee currently, that's the direction we'll head.
Yeah, so that process gets tedious when you're dealing with a list that's been in existence for a few years and you're trying to clean it up and, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Getting back to the point that you had brought up, Mr. Mayor, about someone wanting to go to the school nearby, maybe for the lottery system, for, for families that come into that, into that category, maybe, possibly could get their names put into the lottery a second time, like twice or three times perhaps, so that their chances of, of being successful in the lottery would be enhanced because of the proximity to the schools? I don't know if that would be something that would be acceptable or a, a solution to that, if, if it's a school that's maybe a block away from where they live, I mean, you know, you get an extra name into the lottery, might be a solution.
Yeah, I think there's a multitude of solutions here and actually, I think this is a conversation that we need to take up. There's a lot of complexities there and for myself coming in July 1, six-month runway that I had on this to, in order to prepare for next year, wasn't enough of a runway to fully analyze the gravity of that change. I think there's some ways that we can, there's some solutions there, we can do wholesale solution. This community has changed immensely since the prior policies put in place. The challenge that's before us right now, in order to be prepared to open school next year, we just don't have a long enough runway. It's definitely on the radar as part of our strategic planning, how do we create those connections to schools? The worst-case scenario, I think, that was brought to me, is a family that had three children that were all going to three different schools, so one household and they were at three different schools. The current policy is neither easy to manage nor easy to understand when you're sending a kid to school. So, what we were able to establish here was greater clarity in the wording and greater alignment between what we're saying and what we're doing. That's what we've accomplished here. We have not, and I want to be really transparent, we, we have not solved the great headaches that some of our families are... that some of our families are experiencing. We have not reduced the enormous management burden that our clerical staff continues to tell me exists in our Family Resource Center. We will engage that conversation, we will analyze that. I do believe there's going to be some decision points I would expect coming to this committee ahead of next February. But right now, we're in a place whereby, by February, our school assignment team is saying they really need, need firm clarity in order to truly say, school's going to be opening next year. And that's, you know, that's, that's just as honest as I can, can be with it. There's a lot of complexity here with the school assignment process. I don't think anybody likes it. I haven't heard anybody that said, hey, superintendent, that's like a really great assignment process you got. So we know we've got to adjust this, and we probably need to adjust it in a more seismic way than what we've done here.
And it was important to continue to prioritize simply sibling preference. So that is something that absolutely carries over from the prior policy and continues to be a priority.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. When, when you talk about the, the preschool, pre-registration, then the kindergarten, are preschoolers who go through that process, do they have to then go through it again for kindergarten? That's just for my own information.
Yes, that, that is correct, and that was a discussion and decision that happened prior to this policy, something that is continuing into this policy, and for good reason, because pre-K is not compulsory.
Mm-hmm.
And so when, when we give a preference for attending pre-K, we're actually disadvantaging students who may have gone to a different systems pre-K because it was full day, because it may have had transportation.
Right.
So it was important that, if it's not required to attend pre-K, that we not give preferences.
Also, so on the, publishing the, the waitlist, so is this what I'm looking at now on the website, where it gives you just how many people are on the waitlist? Is that what you're talking about, continuing? So we're not actually publishing the waitlist so that a parent could then go on, see their lottery number, see it move up the list, see it?
So my understanding is that it, it, it should list the number that you were given, the five, the five-digit number.
So that would be new.
But right now, there's no waitlist. We're past the waitlist deadline, so you wouldn't see a waitlist posted right now because there's no waitlist for 2019, 2020. There are no longer placements from the waitlist.
No, I understand that, but if we're saying that we're going to be transparent about it, what I'm looking at here, which was last updated on 11/13, which makes sense, it doesn't, it, you're not tracking individual students as a, as a rule. So is that what, is this going to continue? That it's just a, a, some total number of, numbers of students on a waitlist? Or is it going to be a mechanism that parents who are on the waitlist can actually track their progress?
So, so let me look into that. I, I definitely want to understand the capability of our system, because there are systems that are able to manage, you know, those postings much better. So I do need to understand our system a little better. We are looking at improving our system and software to make this process more efficient. We may not be there yet, but that is the type of information that, that if we're not able to do right now, definitely is a goal.
Okay, that would, I think that would be, I mean, it's more a function, I think, of transparency that I think would be really valuable. That's what I had thought, as I was reading this, I thought that's what we're moving towards. But I, I can understand the complexities of it. My, my only other question is, so the shift in moving the high school information center, parent information center now, so it's co-host with our, the larger Family Resource Center, you're looking for that to continue? I think that's great. What have been the positives of, of shifting that over?
Sure, so, so our hope is that we're able to more efficiently serve more students coming in, because prior, it was just one clerk being able to serve the high school over the summer. Now that person is in the Family Resource Center, which is fully staffed the entire summer, and families can come, they can get full service throughout the summer. And, and of course, our goal is always to get students as quickly as possible into schools. So we're still working on that, but that is, that is our goal.
Mr. Howie?
I just have to make a comment. Family Resource Center, to me, in the past couple of years, has improved more than anything else in the system, as far as I'm concerned. They're trying to get as close as they can to neighborhood schools. We've never had the vote, really never brought up a vote on the school committee, I don't believe, that we voted for neighborhood schools or not. I believe that could be done, if you have four votes, that we could move in that direction. We have a lot of things we have to do now, but this is a, a problem that's been in the city for quite a while. But I do want to say, Ms. Duda, that's running the Family Resource Center, if we can get the whole system to run like that system has run in the past two years, we'll be in good shape. It's moving in a good direction. It's not where I want it to be. I think neighborhood schools are where we go. But if you talk to John Dakota and the people that know how to break the city down, we don't have a school big enough in Centerville to pull that off yet. But maybe with this mayor, who knows? Who knows? We might get a new school in Centerville someday that could do that. I appreciate Mr. Dillon's concerns over this. I know how he's campaigned for this, but that's the problem. The problem is, we're not at a hundred percent, but this is the best I've seen it, and I just, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. I just have one comment, if you don't mind, from up here. So I apologize, this week's been busy. I just got this report tonight, so I would almost like to make a motion to defer it to the February fifth meeting, so we can all really take a good look at it and answer our questions if the body so desires, but, because I have a few questions about, you know, are there any preference for, if someone works at the school, are they allowed to bring this, their student to the school, and does that still happen? And I had questions about transfers, so I don't know what the wish of the body is. Ms. Darley?
I don't think we made any changes in that regard, and I, I would defer to the administration, but I thought we were under some kind of timeline with the pre, pre-registration for preschool and all that. These recommendations went through the subcommittee.
Well, that's fine, I'll leave it up to the body, but it looks like a few people had some questions. I just got this tonight because I was kind of relying on the paper packet, and I was relying on the paper this week.
It wasn't in the paper, yeah, we're going to try to get them on Friday, right?
Right. So I don't know, whatever the wish of the body is, do you want to vote on it tonight or defer it to the fifth?
Well, I think there was a timeline crunch, that's why we met in subcommittee last year.
Okay.
So the new members wouldn't have had that opportunity to go through those discussions that we did. But we didn't make changes to the really significant problems that we have about, you know, being able to get to the school closest to your neighborhood, the issues with, you know, schools that don't have seats and all those things. We didn't change any of that stuff.
So is there a timeline crunch on this, Dr. Boyd?
Yeah, so your drop-dead date will be the next committee meeting. So the request here would be that, in public, we know the specific guidance, so that we can bring something for approval on February fifth. We have taken an approach in the past, first reading, send it to a subcommittee, come back for approval. This one already went to the subcommittee previously. You are not going to be in a time, you're going to be in more of a time crunch than to be able to make any significant adjustments, I fear. You're going to be really around language formatting, some things that you could actually approve it with contingencies. But if it be the desire of the committee, we can do the legwork to meet with each of you individually. The next meeting will be your drop-dead date. We've got to have something approved on the February fifth, I believe, meeting, is it fifth is the next one? So February fifth, we would have to have something in place, or we'll be reverting back to the old policy.
So I'll rely on the wish of the committee, but, Ms., well, it's not a motion.
Yeah, no, I, I know we did have a lot of questions about it, but I'm satisfied with the superintendent's answer that we're, we're trying to get things done for next year, and this does seem like it will be fluid and something that we will be working on over the next couple of years. So I, I'm comfortable with, with where we're at.
Ms. Darley?
I was just going to add, if the piece that's the most time-sensitive, if that doesn't have a lot of controversy around it.
Just do it all.
Maybe we could move on that tonight? Oh, okay.
Just do it all, and then, sure.
All right. I mean, I'm good with knowing that there's more that has to be done, much more involved work.
I definitely can hear my colleague, Mr. Dillon's, concerns about everything that's going on, but I just would like to, through you, Mayor, back to Latifah, you had a lot of input, a lot of help from Mrs. Duda, I hope, on this. I would have no problem to make a motion right now that we just approve this and move on, and then we can.
Seconded by Mr. Dakota. So we'll do a roll call. Roll call?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darley?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Nine, two, budget transfers?
Thank you. I also will, as a, a point of advertising, there is a subcommittee where this is part of the role of the subcommittee. We could certainly get that up and going immediately, that Ms. Phillips will be the admin rep if those are endorsed here this evening. Yes, Ms. Phillips, and then to Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So tied to this policy, we are having a kindergarten showcase on February 26th and March 2nd. So we're going to start getting communication out to our families around where that is and what time that is, but that's the first opportunity for our, our families of incoming kindergartners to start learning about the school enrollment process, all of the schools that are available to them in their zone, so that they can get in that pre-registration period. So we can look out for that information coming very soon.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the budget transfer of $77,050.24 by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darley. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. I was just curious about two of the transfers that we're transferring up for, into the legal settlements line, legal settlements line item, and then also the transfer into the Riley Student Activities line item.
The legal settlements is a special ed issue that was brought up in executive session, and the Riley After-School Program was part of this additional school site budgeting choices that they, the, the schools had, and the Riley chose to fund an after-school activity that would pay a stipend to teachers.
Okay, just, thank you.
Roll call?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darley?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Permission to post bilingual family liaison lead. Need a motion to post a bilingual family liaison lead position by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Clark. Any questions? Roll call?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darley?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Permission to post special education family advocate. I need a motion to post special education family advocate, advocate position by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Darley. Ms. Darley?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Under the qualifications for the special education family advocate, it says a minimum of three, and then in parentheses, five years of experience. So I'm just wondering if it's three or five?
Ms. Desmond?
It is five years, and that is a typo.
Okay, good.
So we can change that. We will fix that.
Thank you.
Mr. Howie?
Yeah, I had a problem when I seen this at first. Why are we hiring an advocate for people with special education? It just struck me the wrong way when I first seen it. But then when you get these emails and phone calls from people that have special ed concerns, worrying about placement of children, and, and I know my colleagues have received many emails and phone calls about this, it just seems like that position to some people, I've had phone calls, they say, why are we hiring an advocate for that? It's like, we're pushing for special ed, but no, there's a lot of people that need someone to help them and advocate for the position, so I'm going to support this position, but when it says advocate like that, it does bring some concerns to me, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, so to clarify, the intent here is not to tell people to go into special education services. It's a rather complex process of special ed, receiving services, identifying for services, and what we've heard time and time again from many family members is that navigating that process, they're getting differing recommendations, they don't quite know what's out there. So here, what we have is a specific position, as family members are hearing that, as they're identifying themselves, as they're saying, this is something we think for our family can help and advocate on their behalf for what services are available throughout the school district, what might be the right path for them and their child, whether it be special education or elsewhere. A lot of those questions are coming into the office, and in some cases, I can tell you, Mr. Howie, there's not a need for special education services, but absent that support and advocacy, families are saying, hey, test my child, place my child, and it just becomes a conversation that's really not about what's in the best need, best interest of a child. So that advocacy is not necessarily about, hey, let's, let's, let's place Bob in special education, it's instead, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Howie, what's the needs of your child, and how do you navigate this system to get those needs met?
Joe, Mr. Howie?
I support this without a doubt. Like I said, when you get phone calls, I don't even want to answer my phone call when people have a, a big issue like that, because I don't feel like you have any knowledge on it. So I want to know who to turn to, and I believe this will be the person that I could give that problem to. So I'm going to support it. I just had a problem with that word, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. With both these positions, I noticed that they're both twelve-month positions. Is that a new direction?
Yeah.
So I applaud it, but I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, thank you, committee member Martin. In both of these cases, these are about connecting with community members, connecting with families, and we feel that being a parent is a twelve-month job, so while the ten-month might be typical in a school-based community, for these positions, twelve-month is most appropriate.
Excellent. I, I mean, that's why it jumped out at me, because I really do think that for many of our, are these both going to be in LSAA?
Uh, Dr. Hall?
Presently, they're both listed as unaffiliated.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I, absolutely, I think, you know, the more resources we can have, you know, in this twelve-month range, the better off we are for all the kind of support services that we're offering to, to children and families, so that's a, that's a good, a good move. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call? Oh, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. The word advocate in there, you know, makes me think of child, bringing an advocate to an IEP meeting. Is, is there a role there? Like, are they an option for a, a child to have during that process? I mean, but they're on the school side, right?
Yeah, so this wouldn't play that role, it would be, but at, at the same time, if you think about it that way, so thank you, committee member Dillon. So for the larger community, a family can bring an advocate of their own to an IEP meeting, and the terminology of advocate is used. So in that vein, though, this would be someone who is advocating on behalf of families and is working on the family's behalf, not in that specific role, but you might be able to think about them as playing some of the same, same role. We're taking on some of that as a school district to say, every family deserves an advocate. But it is mostly in the case of families in some don't know which, where else to turn within the district, and are raising their hand and saying, special education, because they know that term, and don't know all of the other things that are available as possible services. So also helping families in that way to advocate for services outside of special education as well.
No, yeah, I think, I, I think this is something that's needed, that just clicked in my mind, and I think I got a question from somebody else about, you know, advocate, and that.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darley?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Vote to accept donation of $2,500 from Smith-Purdin Foundation. So I need a motion to accept $2,500 donation from the Smith-Purdin Foundation by Ms. Darley, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Any questions? Roll call? Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Permission to post Assistant TV Production Staff, part-time. I need a motion to post the Assistant TV Production Staff, part-time position by Ms. Darby, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Any questions? Mr. Howey?
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As far as the TV studio goes, how is that going right now? I mean, is it, well, can we get the Channel 22 going for some of the things that we need to do?
I've been, I've had, I've had a really accelerated learning curve about the history of our TV station and all the potential that it has to offer. I can offer to you a firm commitment that as we start to look into the next budget period, we're going to have to start getting back to where this community was previously with how that TV station was being utilized. Ms. Sheehan behind me has a coffee talk show planned in the works to compete with you on Tuesday and Thursday, Mr. Howey, so...
No, no, Ronnie and Johnny, that's the show, that's the show that you want to compete with. I appreciate it. I just want to, must shape in there at the high school, especially in the TV studio.
We're full of opportunity, is how we look at it, and we're going to be improving going forward.
Great.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next establishment of the subcommittees. So I took a look at how the old format was, and I looked at the suggested new format, and I think we should go with the suggested new format. I think it's a new approach, and I think it, you know, let's see how it works. It looks like it's going to be a good thing, so I would ask for a vote, for a motion to approve the establishment of the subcommittees by, sure, by Mr. Howey, seconded by Ms. Clark. Sorry, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
How are you doing there, Joy? One more thing left. So we have convention and conference requests. Motion to take the approval of all three conference requests together by Ms. Darby, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Any questions? Roll, Ms. Darby?
I just, Connie, sorry, sorry. Just one, just to make sure it's correct, the 10/11, 10-point of the overnight travel request, it just has the wrong date on it, just you might want to, I mean, I know we do this just for insurance purposes, but just so it's accurate. Thanks.
Make sure that doesn't happen anymore, Mr. Boy. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
So before we adjourn, nice to have you, Mr. Dillon, Ms. Clark, my first meeting in a long time. Joy, are there other representatives from the high school that you'd be switching out with? Or are you the only one that comes, or? Okay. All right. When my daughter was there, I think they had two or three students that would rotate, so, okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Sure.
I think Joy owns a dance studio, something like that. Do you take people 65 years old? Can we go in at that age to learn how to dance? I like dancing.
You have to sign away.
Do you have a school?